Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Delasso.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Skilman.
Here.
Councilmember Landman not present as yet.
And if you would all kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Barich.
May I speak on this item?
No, you may not. This will be a non-action item that you can speak to at the end of the meeting.
We just took action saying the pledge, sir.
That's not a voting action, Mr. Barich.
We took action. I'm allowed to speak on that item, either.
The Pledge of Allegiance is not an action. It's a recital.
You're denying your right.
No, I'm not. I'm saying you can speak to that item at the end of the meeting on the non-action items. You'd be more than welcome to talk to it at that point. So I'd like to welcome you all to the council meeting of May 10, 2016. And if I could get a approval of the minutes and notice of reading of the resolutions.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And can we get a roll call in the absence of our other council member, please?
Councilmember Skilman?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Delasso?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
That's four ayes, motion passes.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Water Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. And lastly, the City offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. We do not have an honorary mayor this week, this meeting. I think with the end of the school year, it's difficult to find some students that have the time available, so that may be, but that'll probably be suspended during the summer and picked up again in the fall.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak on this item?
It's not an action item, Mr. Barich. You can speak to that at the end of the meeting.
You're denying my right to speak.
I'm telling you, your right to speak on that particular item will be at the end of the meeting.
Certainly.
Certainly. Now, we're going to move on to proclamations, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I'm pleased to be here to present this item. Every year since 1960, the American Public Works Association sponsors National Public Works Week to educate and bring attention to the importance of public works in our daily lives. Many cities across the country mark this week with events. City staff is looking to have an event next year at the Corporation Yard, have an open house, and have all the equipment on display and interact with the community. This would help increase awareness of the important skills and capabilities of our staff. The theme this year is "Public Works Always There" and emphasizes how communities depend on public works and how the men and women are always there and always ready, from responding to emergencies, down trees, spills, floods, et cetera, to fixing water leaks and clearing sewer mains, to filling potholes and fixing streets. The list goes on and on. Public work staff is equipped to address a wide variety of issues around town. Our staff likes to, no doubt, stay behind the scenes and out of the limelight, but it's good to pause to recognize them and the importance of the work they do. I'd like to thank council for having this presentation on the agenda tonight. Al Martinoni, our longtime Superintendent of Public Works, and Ralph Belts, our Maintenance Worker Level Two, are here tonight to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. With that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. Proclamation to the City Council of the City of Kattati, May 15 through 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation and maintenance of public work systems and infrastructure, including water, sewers, streets, parks, and public buildings, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these systems and infrastructure, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these systems, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work staff, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated public work staff is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be proclaimed on this 10th day of May, 2016, the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in Kattati. Let me present this to you guys. I am sure the council will have a few words to say, but we'll have a few words after we present this. Yeah. Plenty of them. Thank you very much. Well, thanks very much for coming here. City of Kattati does a fantastic job. In the 30-plus years that I've known them, I've seen them out there at all hours of the day. I've never really heard any complaints from them, and they're always helping in volunteering at events that are needed, and I think you guys do a tremendous job. I really, really appreciate it. Vice Mayor Harvey?
I think, as the Public Works Director said, oftentimes you guys are kind of quiet and behind the scenes, but, boy, I do know that you may be getting things done around town, but when there's a crisis or something going on, we definitely see you guys and are really grateful that you're there. I know every time there's a storm, there's always something that happens, and you guys just jump right on it, and I appreciate all that you do for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Skilman?
Thank you. I'll echo that sentiment as well. I know, especially too, when we have events at the park and getting the holiday lights up and all that, I know that that's just a lot of work, and really appreciate your efforts in keeping the city looking good. And I know when we've had issues, like over at Putnam Park, when I walk my dog, if there's graffiti and things like that, it's just immediately taken care of, so I just really want to echo their sentiments and thank you guys for all of your work.
And Councilmember Delasso?
I'll take a pass. No, actually, I'm not going to. You know, that's not going to happen. No chance. Yeah, you got, I mean, you know, as you're affectionately known as the Orange Boys and Susan, just to make sure she gets included. You know, in the 30-plus years I've lived in the city too, you know, you guys have been uber-responsive. I'll never forget, in our neighborhood, on a Halloween Eve, when the sewage system decided to back up and come onto Eagle Drive, and kids were splashing as they're running around with their candy, and it's like, yeah. And that call came in, and you know, you guys, you came out of nowhere from your homes and, you know, took care of the issue. So, you know, we have nothing but good things to say about you, and all the stuff that gets done for all of the events, all that prep work, it's a ton of work, you know, putting signs up, taking them down that afternoon. So really, thank you guys so much, and I think I've now stalled long enough for Mark to say something. I think I've given him a couple of seconds to think. And just to throw out there, there's that downed yook over by Walgreens, too, just immediately south of Walgreens. I know it's not city property, but it'd be great if, now that we're doing all this great work on the road, it'd be really nice if that little downed ice, or maybe we could do something about it. Anyway, thank you guys very much. Seriously.
Well, rather than add to your workload, I'll just say this. Thanks for your work. You're probably the most publicly visible of all of Kattati's hard-working employees, and that's noticed by all of us and all of the community, so well-deserved accolades, and thank you very much for what you do.
Mr. Barich, will you open up for a public comment?
For the benefit of the public, my name is George Barich. I'm a former city councilman here, and I would also like to thank our Public Works Department. They've always been doing a good job. One point I'd like to bring up to the council, which I think is important, and I'll just be one minute, is that one of the things I've always found most impressive about our Public Works Department is that when I have not been on the city council, I've had a couple of short discussions with them, and they've been very careful to not be political, to not take political sides, and to stay really neutral, and that's very, very admirable, because we always don't see that in cities, especially like in Kattati, with the police department and so forth. You don't see the Public Works Departments out campaigning. You don't see them, you don't hear about them stuffing envelopes and taking care of your campaign signs and so forth, and I think that is very admirable, because the pressure to do that, the pressure to go along with the status quo and help the people in office who are signing the paychecks, that's a strong incentive. And I can tell you from personal experience, at least from my personal experience, that each and every one of them have tried to remain very, very neutral, and as you know, we don't talk to our Public Works Department or our city staff when we're in office. We're supposed to direct all of our questions and concerns with the city manager, and then he's the conduit. And it's the same thing with our police department. We're not supposed to speak with our police department personnel, other than a gracious hello and good afternoon and so forth. And hats off to our Public Works Department, and good luck going forward.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Now we'll move on to proclamation regarding the Community Resilience Challenge Month. Proclamation to the City Council of the City of Kattati declaring the month of May, 2016, to be Community Resilience Challenge Month, whereas the City of Kattati is concerned about the health and well-being of its residents and seeks to create a healthy, sustainable, livable community, and whereas last year, the Sixth Annual Community Resilience Challenge inspired thousands of people across Sonoma County to complete 8,363 actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, and build community, and whereas the City of Kattati provides through key partners such as Daily Acts, programs and services that educate residents, students, businesses, and community leaders about sustainable practices, and whereas the City of Kattati can achieve its climate goals by growing and eating fresh local garden produce, greening its transportation, and creating energy and water-efficient homes, businesses, schools, and communities, and whereas the City of Kattati encourages opportunities for growth, eating, and sharing healthy food, water reduction, and energy and water efficiency as we work together for a healthier, more vibrant, and viable future, and whereas that the City of Kattati supports the Community Resilience Challenge and its goal to inspire thousands of actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community. Now therefore, be proclaimed on this 10th day of May, 2016, the City Council of the City of Kattati hereby declare the month of May, 2016, Community Resilience Challenge Month in the City of Kattati. And now, if we have any speakers that would like to address the council?
Thank you. My name is Dustin DiMatteo. I'm a new programs coordinator with Daily Acts. Took a lot of the notes I had, so I'll have to piece it together, but the Community Resilience Challenge is a call to action. Daily Acts is calling on you leaders, those in the audience and at home, to act on community-based local solutions to pivotal issues facing our planet. We're inspiring thousands of people to take action, whether by installing gray water systems, sheet mulching their lawns, planting gardens, or installing drip irrigation. There are many ways to get involved with Daily Acts. On June 4th, that is a great opportunity to get involved. We'll be growing Kattati's Wildlife Corridor from 10:00 to 2:00 PM located at Pocket Park. It is south of the Oliver's Kattati Market, and they're actually donating a bunch of free food and beverages for all the volunteers to enjoy. And with only 20 days remaining in the Community Resilience Challenge, I'd like to ask you to go online and register your actions, and this will help Daily Acts tell the story of the growing resilience movement at dailyacts.org. By encouraging the county to participate in the challenge, we are all helping to create a more connected, vibrant, and resilient community, one act at a time. We're very grateful to the City of Kattati and the council for the proclamation and support of the Community Resilience Challenge, so thank you so very much for your time.
Justin, thank you very much. I don't know if the council would like to have any questions or address anything?
Sure, why not? No questions? That's good news. You know, we've, the city has been working with Daily Acts, and the work you guys have done at Pocket Park is just a great example to show people that, you know, it doesn't take a lot of effort to really, you know, make a transformation to your yard, and I want to commend you guys and Brianna as well for the two-county tour that took place last weekend. So Marin and Sonoma Counties and the Water Agency was involved, and it was great. We participated in that and had a great time doing it, so thank you guys very much for doing that work.
Thank you. And thank you, Brianna.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to reiterate what Councilmember Delasso has said. I think you've done a great job there and some of the other projects that you're working on throughout the community and the county. And I don't know if you guys want to have a picture taken with the council?
Sure.
No changes?
Thank you, Mayor. No changes.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2016-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And with that, I'll open up citizens' business. Mr. Barich?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we recording tonight? Because at the last meeting, we weren't recording, so I'm going to reiterate that Mr. Moore, for months now, you've accused me of lying regarding my fact that I brought up your criminal record here at the Diaz. You have lied when I've sat down. You've accused me of lying, fabricating, and so forth. The fact is, you have a reputation in this town as being the town drunk. I shared with you a letter from a police officer who pulled you over and cited you for being drunk, for driving under the influence. I want to read that email again to the public that was sent to me. John Moore is a drunk. I arrested him years ago for DUI, and he got out of it, pleading out to a drunken public. He is habitually extremely intoxicated around the downtown area and continues to drive drunk. The officer continues, I'm going to place this up on the board over here so the public can see it once more, since you keep calling this officer a liar and me a liar. So since you're calling this officer a liar, this officer risked his career doing the right thing, sending me this email, and also arresting you for driving under the influence and trying to keep the street safe from people like you. I think this officer is a hero. This officer lost his job here in Kattati because he insisted on seeing Councilman Landman here prosecuted for crimes in the city as well. The police chief fired this officer because he would not file a falsified police report that the chief forced him or asked him to do. The mayor's lies and cover-ups are hurting this town, in my opinion. Mr. Mayor, you need to come clean with the community about your habitually drunk-driving episodes here in town. You've often been seen drunk in public, been many witnesses to this, and you've come to these meetings over the years, not every meeting, clearly intoxicated, in my opinion. I think you need an explanation how you stole the last election by trying to keep your criminal record hidden from the public. The people of Kattati do deserve the truth, and I want to see this denial episode of your life to come to an end. You know, I'm here to help you. Alcohol addiction is a disease. The city council can enable you, the community can, your friends can enable you, and so forth, but they're using you, Mr. Moore. It's a disease. You cannot function and manage this town properly under this situation. You're putting the staff at risk. You're putting the staff under stress, having to deal with you, and you need to get help. I will help you with this any way I can. I'm at your disposal, but you need to come clean.
Time's up.
Can I have a little more time?
Are you kidding me? Time is up. Time's up. Anyone else like to address the council regarding citizens' business? Seeing none, I'll close citizens' business. I certainly appreciate your magnanimous, loving gesture to help fellow community members who have stolen elections from you, and the allegations that you make are wonderful. I really appreciate that. And we only have six more months, so that's, what, 12 more?
Calling me up, sir?
12 more times. No, I'm not. I'm making a comment. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to direction of future agenda items. Okay, nothing we're adding to future agenda items at this time. And now we will address the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As the record shows, it passes 5-0. We don't have any public hearings tonight, and I will move on to the regular agenda. Number 14A, Gateway Pedestrian Plaza Mosaic Artwork Installation Contract Award. Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director. We can see that work is progressing on the Gateway project out on 116 and Old Redwood Highway. Related to this project is an effort to add artwork to the new plaza, the two pedestrian plazas we're going to have out there on the corners. And so this, the design of the artwork began underway with the, in September of 2015, when the city went through a selection process and selected Mario Uribe, who is a local artist who has done similar work for other cities. Very pleasing artistic mosaic artwork in public places, obviously. And with that selection, the intention is, you know, not only to design it, but since it's a piece of art, to oversee the installation of that work. It's not like a sculpture that you can purchase and then just, we're looking at somebody to locate it and just move it and install it in a certain location. The installation is very much part of that creation of the artwork. So over the past several months, we brought the design concepts before the Design Review Committee, and that was recommended and moved forward to the Planning Commission, who reviewed it and approved the design. So at this point, we have a proposed cost estimate from Mario, the artist, Mario Uribe, and he is looking to move forward with the, putting templates together and using Art Start, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, the artist from that group, to go ahead and do the installation with his oversight. So at this point, that, the cost estimate for that, that he's saying for the, to put the tile on one whole face of the wall there, we've got a winding wall through both plazas and the side of the wall that is facing the pedestrians, because there's the other side that's facing the landscaping, but the mosaic will only be on the wall facing the pedestrian plaza, is $74,000. And this is, just because of the nature of the work and unforeseen how much that was going to cost, this is not in the adopted city budget. This would have to come from an appropriated general fund balance. And there is sufficient funds in that balance, and the Public Works Department alone has unfilled position of an associate engineer that we're working to fill, but basically it was funded at 100% for the entire year, and now we're at the last few months, and there's savings there, along with a municipal utility worker, or maintenance worker that we filled, I think halfway through the year. So that's the source of those funds, those positions not having been filled for the full year. That concludes the presentation. If, I would be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Councilmember Delasso?
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation, too. In discussing, I assume, with the artist, has there been a discussion for ongoing maintenance of the tile mosaic, specifically cleaning? Because, you know, I know those things, they can gather up all kinds of dirt and dust, they can get mold on them, so has there been any discussion? Because different materials react differently, and I was just curious if that discussion's taken place.
So if I understand the question correctly, it's minimizing, any materials we can select minimize ongoing maintenance, just as well as, hey, there's some unavoidable maintenance we may have.
Sure.
We have not had that discussion. These are tiles, and we had those tiles presented before both the Design Review and Planning Commission meetings, and...
That didn't come up?
It has not come up. I would imagine we would, you know, it lends itself to washing it down quite readily. I don't know if there's a certain specific tile that is better for that or not. The one on the ground, the overriding consideration would be, because a pattern does come on to the floor, and people will be walking on it, is to have traction.
Right.
And certainly over time, you know, those colors would fade somewhat, and the ones on the wall, of course, could be, we've got the more, the brighter colors and shinier finish, so...
Yeah, and regardless of what's used, there's going to be maintenance. I'm not saying there won't be, but I'm just, I'm thinking whatever material, depending on how the tile is created, if it's baked, if it's ceramic, there's just a variety. I've gone through this before. It would be good to at least check in with the artist and find out what's the best cleaning agent to use. It may be soap and water, as opposed to something that's abrasive, that could do damage to it, so I just wanted to bring that one up. Thank you.
Councilmembers, come on.
Thank you. I just had a procedural question before we get to that point.
I just had a procedural question before we get to that point. Does this need to be three separate motions, since it's broken down into three questions, or can we just one together?
It's one resolution that encompasses all three actions.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I just wanted to ask that before we got there and got confused. Thanks.
Councilmember Lemon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Scott, I just wanted to ask you to expand on the, typically with a city project, it would be put out to competitive bid. Obviously, this is a slightly different thing, and the amount of people qualified to do something like this with experience in Sonoma County and a workforce that's largely Sonoma County people, is, I get, difficult to find, but I wonder if you could explain a little more about the putting it out to bid, obviously, would essentially, to what detail would we have to reinvent the wheel for somebody else to take this project and try and bring it in less expensive? Would it be essentially almost starting from the beginning, or is this something kind of a trade dress that only, you know, that would be very difficult for someone else to pull off, even with a picture to go by?
Correct. There's, the arguments made that there'd be no advantage to the city to put this out to bid. I mean, putting projects out to bid is to achieve a lower price, you know, with the same quality of product, and so we would be faced with a significant cost in assembling very detailed specifications, criteria for exactly how it's to look, and what materials, and how it's to be applied, and then also put together detailed designs and drawings of it. And all along, we would probably be losing the intent and the effect that we were looking at, because that all resides with the artist, arguably, you know, and because his selection was due in a large part to looking around and seeing the artwork that he's done for others, so he's a proven, has a proven technique that we like, and so, yes, it would be a cost of putting that package together, and it introduced a lot of uncertainty as to what the product would look like at the end.
Basically, we'd be kind of reinventing the wheel, as it were, and trying to redevelop something at our own cost, which arguably would be higher than what Mr. Uribe brings already having it done for us. Is that a good way to sum it up, then?
Correct.
Okay. This is something new. I'm very pleased to see, actually, the first time in six years, we're sitting here looking at putting a piece of public, Arion, for the city of Catati. That is a great thing, so it's a slightly different process that I've seen in the past, so I just wanted to touch base on that. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Along those same lines, since he's done so much of this work in Sonoma County at lots of different places, has he also overseen that work? So if we were to put it out to bid, would be, we'd be doing something different than everyone else has done?
When, when we were talking to the artist initially, he was directly involved in all those installations, and I can't speak to the exact capacity, but either directly, you know, with the mosaics. He's done several other public mosaic projects. I think one of the more notable ones that people would recognize is the fish at Prince Memorial Greenway in Santa Rosa. So, you know, he definitely has, he definitely has that experience in being directly involved in the installation of mosaic project in a public place.
Yes, since it's, it's really, it's art, it's not like a public works project. It's art, and the artist themselves is typically involved in what their artwork is. You don't usually have the artist stand over, say, a painter and say, paint this way because this is what I want you to paint, so it makes really a lot more sense.
So I will also add, too, that, you know, the Art Start program is a lot of high school-aged kids, you know, people that are interested in art as a career, and so, you know, Mario, the artist's capacity in there, in that organization is to guide these kids, and they're doing a lot of the manual labor, but he's the, sort of the artistic vision and guide behind it all.
Yeah, that was the other aspect that I was really pleased to see, that really, you know, as another means of teaching someone a trade, it's nice that he's passing on a trade to someone and showing them the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. The one question I had was if, once this work is completed and the mosaics are installed, if that's the direction that we choose to go on there, there, will there be some sort of a clear coat that would discourage graffiti on there? Because I know that there's multiple types of clear sealers for those different products, and that might also address Councilman Delauso's concern regarding maintenance. If those tiles are sealed correctly, that should help eliminate two concerns.
I think with Delauso's suggestion and yours, we will look at that as part of the, you know, the maintenance aspects of the project. We'll look at that as an option, anything to reduce the maintenance costs moving forward. I mean, those coats, I understand they're costly, so there's some upfront costs reducing the maintenance costs down the road, and we'd have to take a look at that to see if that pencils out, but these are great suggestions, and we'll certainly look into the maintenance, lowering the maintenance costs in the future.
Okay. I have a few comments I'm going to make, but I'm going to open up for public comment at this point, so. Vice Mayor Herg.
Thank you, Mayor. The fact that the staff is going to look at some of these items for you after you pass this, this item is problematic, to say the least, and I appreciate each and every one of the council's concerns and their questions to the staff, very much on point, so I do appreciate that, but there's a big red flag here. The fact that the artist isn't here tonight to answer your questions, who's going to receive $74,000 for a project? We don't know what the warranty is, what the shelf, what the life of the product that's going to be on the wall, and so forth, is really telling. You people know better than this. I'm surprised this isn't on the consent calendar, the way it was presented. Let's put aside the fact that this project wasn't put out to bid, with all the great artists that we have here in Sonoma County, but the fact that the artist himself is not here to assure you tonight is troubling at best. Malfeasance on the part of the council and the staff, probably more appropriate. The fact is, we do have other art projects in town, and we have the statue down at the memorial park and so forth, but I applaud your efforts to try to do it right the first time. Governments always don't do that. Whenever I see that you have that in your heart to do that, I applaud it. I would ask you and advise you to table this matter, let staff go back and get your concerns addressed, and bring this matter back. We are in no hurry. There's no hurry for any of this. Let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this particular item, seeing none on close, public comment? Bring it back to the council. Couple of concerns I do have. I would like to mandate that there be some sort of a sealer, some clear coat sealer on those tiles, right as soon as it's installed and the tiles are cured, because I've known other particular tile projects that have not had that, and it's more difficult to do it at the end, and I think if the, I'm sure that the artist would have the ability to spray paint a clear coat sealer on the tiles. That would also inhibit the fading from the sun and protect it from graffiti, so that's what would be one of my concerns on there. And then the other component that I really like about this particular project is the fact that it does use Art Start, and it does use apprentice artists that are in the community. You know, this is something that's going to be around for years to come, and although the price tag is not something that I'm overly thrilled about, I understand that the concept of what he's doing and integrating the art into the community and educating the younger artists up and coming, I think it's something that would be an asset to the community, and I think it will really help to beautify that particular project. So with that in mind, and with the sealing of those tiles, I would be willing to move that along. Councilman Lemon?
Oh, I tend to agree. I think I'll support this tonight. As far as a clear coat, I would suggest working with the artist, actually, and talking, just to be clear, I know there are some new formulations that are designed specifically, so paint essentially almost slides off, it's easier to clean, but I would want to make sure, I would take advantage of Mr. Uribe's experience, has he worked with these, is there any secondary effects on the luster or look of a tile? How much better is that than just regular tile? These are some questions that I can't answer, but I have a feeling it's worth looking into, and then I'm sure the best direction forward would be clear, because I think there'd be some value. Clearly, Public Works does a great job of trying to clean. We see where we do have graffiti, like in some of, some of the areas, but even with that cleaning, the product never looks quite as good after that, so I think we'd be prudent to try and find what the best step was for it, and even if this is a little pricier, it would be worth that investment to keep it looking good for the community. I'm sure, speaking of paying for it, I'm sure staff is never happy when you're trying to fill positions, or they don't get filled right away, but actually, it's turned into an unexpected bonus this year, because of that, that takes care of an unexpected cost, so consider that a little good luck from the universe for us. I think that's a good thing. And I'm going to agree, I really like, if you read about Art Start here, these are local young people from the colleges and the high school, so this is essentially funding local artists, keeping dollars at home, as well as Councilmember Harvey said, providing training, and with all that, I'm satisfied. This is a good project, and I think it would be less cost-effective to wait and move forward later on this, to do it while the construction is going on makes a lot of sense, to drive the maximum benefit from it. So I'm looking forward to supporting this tonight.
Vice Mayor Herg?
I have no further questions. I know that it will be very important for us to kind of open up the gateway there, and I, I think that this is one way of making that whole area much more pleasant, and wanting people to come down into downtown, so I agree with you. I wish that the price wasn't what it was, but, you know, knowing that, you know, tile isn't cheap, and certainly the installation of individual tiles, I forget what the sizes were, some of them were really rather small. I mean, there's a lot of intricate work there, so I think if you think of it in the greater scheme, that there's two actual walls, and there's all this stone tiles being put in, you know, I think it really is well worth the funds.
Thank you. Councilmembers coming?
Thank you. I'm actually also really excited about making the entryway to our city look a lot more attractive when people first drive in, and one of the things, too, that I wanted to add was, I like the incorporation of the Native American basket design along the top, really goes along well with the chief Catati and our history of Native Americans in the area, so I like that incorporation as well into the artwork. And I'm, I feel fairly confident, too, that given Mr. Uribe's experience in the area and having done public installations like that, he probably will have a lot of good tips as far as what's worked for him in the past, as far as preventing wear and tear and things like that, and also, I'm sure as an artist, you want your artwork to last as long as possible, so I'm sure he's invested some time and energy looking into how to make it last and look its best, so. And I also, my son's about to start Art Quest, so speaking of supporting artists and young budding artists, I think this is a great opportunity to help kids and give them some experience in their chosen field, so I'm interested very much in this project.
Councilmember Delauso?
Yeah, I would disagree slightly with you, Mayor, on the sealant, because I think different styles of tile could be adversely affected by a sealant, so I would just say, staff will go back and research what's the best method. If a sealant is needed, a sealant can be added, that's easy, but I wouldn't, it almost sounded like there was an ultimatum, this, like, I want to make sure there's a sealant on there, and that may not work, that's all I'm saying. And I've done a little tiny bit of research, because we were going to do a mosaic tile pattern at one of our visitor centers just in the last two years, and they are expensive, there's no doubt about that, but things like kiln-fired tiles, mosaic tiles, basically come with lifetime guarantees, and they never fade. They may crack, if somebody was to hit it really hard with a hammer, it's ceramic, right? It's going to crack, so, so I would just be cautious and just say, I think we've given staff pretty clear direction, we want to know that this is, in keeping in light with Public Works and all of their great work, that we don't want to add too much more to their workload, and there will be cleaning. Cleaning is necessary, it's just, that's a part of it, but whatever the best method is, and I've seen this gentleman's work in a couple of places, too, and it's, it's really dynamic, so I would just say, we've given staff direction, I think they're pretty clear in the concept of what we're all addressing up here, and if a sealant's needed, then great, but I wouldn't say, let's make, let's put a sealant on there, just in case that may not be the right method. And again, there's different, there's different methods of creating these ceramic tiles, too. I think they, the kiln-fired ones are done at like 1,800 degrees Fahrenheit, so the color, I don't know if this is the right term, but the color gets baked into the material, and so even if it's chipped away, that color goes deeper and deeper. So anyway, I would just, I wanted to throw that out there, just to say, let's not make it an ultimatum to staff.
I would never say an ultimatum. Maybe more of a mandate or an amendment, but not an ultimatum.
A rose is a rose, okay. And this is off-topic, and this is just to staff, but I think I commented when we were talking about this project months back, that I would love to see, and this is going, I don't know if anybody sees the pattern, but I'm supporting both of the proclamations, here comes the second one, that we do what we can, as best as we can, to have drought-tolerant landscaping in, on those, those two areas there. That's off-topic, we're not taking a motion on that, I just throwing that out as a reminder to staff, so. Now I've covered both proclamations, I feel really good about that.
It's not an ultimatum?
It's not an ultimatum. Well, it might be.
Might be a maybe.
I'll do that offline, yeah. Anyway, thank you. That's all I had.
So for clarification, on this particular project, if we move forward with this, what will be our recourse in assuring that if it's appropriate, that there is an appropriate sealer on that, or, other than the fa, I mean, because I hate to hear, like, six months from now, oh, yeah, we were going to do that, and I mean, and we do, and now we can't do it. Not that this staff has done that, but there have been staffs in the past that have done that.
Yeah, I just, you know, given the, given the amount of art that Art Start and this individual artist has done, and even specifically mosaic art in public spaces, I feel pretty confident that he has, that he can address those concerns, and I would just say that we can report back at maybe even the next council meeting, and just update the council on, on what he feels the best solution is, both in terms of tile types and coatings or not, for graffiti protection.
I'd feel much better about that.
Okay.
Well, with that in mind, then I'm looking for some direction from the council on this.
I'm going to turn my microphone on. I move to adopt a resolution awarding the Gateway Pedestrian Plaza Artwork Installation Construction Contract to Mario Uribe, and authorizing the appropriation of $74,000 from the general fund for the Gateway Pedestrian Plaza Artwork Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute construction agreement for the artwork installation with the added direction from council.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And can we get a roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Skilman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Delauso?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to item number 14B, the train depot fencing modification for this number in area, Rail Transit Smart. Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director. So the, the train station there on East Catati, Centerra Way, is, the platform for that station is nearing completion, and the city has been working, coordinating with them, with Smart, who has hired a contractor to do the work, to, to make sure that it interfaces really well with the building that we put out there. The, the fence is a more of a guardrail, black cast iron fence along the platform, and that's been consistent throughout all of the Smart stations. However, in reviewing the plans, we, staff, city staff noticed that the fence along the east side of the platform was going to be gray cyclone fence, and then the fence near the building, the depot, was going to be a cyclone fence, it's going to be black, but still a cyclone fence, and... it's, but still a cyclone fence, and, you know, we, we like the station, we want it to look very nice and consistent, and what would really add to the appearance of the station is if that guardrail that's on top of the platform is continued down in front of the depot building, which is going to be the most very visible and traveled part of the station, and then the fence on the east side, instead of being the gray cyclone fence, to at least have the black vinyl coating on it. And so the city has made that request of Smart. It would be, we've been told that would be a change order, and we were presented with a, a cost of that change order, and we argued and argued and argued that, hey, this is something that Smart wants, should want as well, and it's a standard for their stations. And what's before you tonight is, is the best we can do, the contractor's been out there for some time, and like I said, it's, the work is almost complete, and so the contractor's any, any week now going to be installing this fence. And so the cost here of $45,000 is the upgrade of those two fences minus the credit for what fences would have been installed anyway, and it's, there's also some conduit work, so that a conduit that's existing out there isn't just buried under the sidewalk, but it actually can daylight to an area where we can access it, access it later. We did, the, the guardrail does, would, would look similar to what's at the, on East Catati Boulevard and the pedestrian corral there at the, the crossing there, and we have the cost of recently replacing that fence, it looks, it was priced out at $210 a linear foot, granted, that's a smaller section, but this, the price we're getting from Smart works out to be $120 per linear foot, and that's, that's reflecting the credit for the cyclone fence. So we just, you know, tried to do as much due diligence as we could on this, to see that we're, we're getting a fairly good price, the contractors, you know, were very suspicious of change orders, and, but it does, it does pencil out to be a, it looks like a reasonable cost. We would like Smart to have taken up this cost, but it's the 11th hour now, and it looks like the, you know, if we want a nicer fence, and we did not act, we would be on our own to switch it out at a later time at our cost. So there's some economy of scale, having the contractor out there at this time, and it's, it's part of his work scope, and just to have him put it in. Financial considerations, this is another item that is, was not in the budget, and so would need to come from the appropriation of the unappropriated balance from the general fund to make this happen. That's, that's the conclusion of my presentation, if there's any questions you have, I'd be happy to respond to this.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Councilmember Landman.
Well, I imagine I'll have some comments later, but right now, just a couple of questions for you. First of all, I'm not, I know any upgrades, Smart doesn't want to do, the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of them doing upgrades for anybody, I want to ask, are we aware at staff level of them doing upgrades recently for anyone, other than the money they put into our chimera tree? Because I, I want to make sure that if they have been willing to move a little bit other places, then I think I would be a little more insistent.
Maybe the city manager can, can tear off of my comments, but the one that comes to my mind is, we've been approached by them on the crossing at East Catati Avenue. At this point, what's in the design is for pedestrians to walk down to Centerra Way, cross there, and come back, and so it's a very convoluted way to get across to the pedestrian path. We've been approached, nothing certain yet, but they're working on a change order at their cost, to make a pathway go directly across East Catati at that location, and handle all the signal warning crossing.
So you're trying to convince me that two out of three is not a bad number? I might, I might be, I might go with that with one other piece, and I think it's pretty clear from the staff report, but I just want to double check in this. So for some reason, we delayed, we hemmed and hawed, the work was done out there, and we decided, yes, a great chain link fence is as ugly as you would expect it to be, and looks terrible, and we want it upgraded, because we're trying to make our town look as good as the people keep the homes in their neighborhoods. Is it correct, it would be roughly twice as much in terms of just cost, because we wouldn't have the credit from Smart for their fencing cost?
The cyclone fence is more, more in the order of $20 or $30 linear foot, so it, it has some impact, but out of $220, you know, make it $190, so 120 is, I think it's more reflecting the economy of scale of doing 270 feet, rather than, I think more like 19 or 20 feet for the pedestrian.
Okay, I saw in here 120 linear foot versus 210 linear foot if purchased independently, and this being due to a credit, but I just wanted to double check that, because that seems the other compelling piece that might convince me, given the time, that it's worth moving forward, so thank you for those answers.
So just a couple of quick follow-ups. On the, on the first question about Smart's, what they've done in other locations, I'm not aware of any locations, I think they're very cognizant of the fact that apparently we talk to each other, and, you know, they don't want to give up anything at any station, because then we all get together, you know, we all get together as staff, and spread the word, and then they have to deal with a bunch of cities asking for stuff, so they don't, they intentionally take this sort of industrial-looking low road to save money, and put it on the cities individually. I know, I know of other cities that are asking for specific upgrades, so it was a bit of a coup earlier, like last year, when all the cities got together and basically forced them to upgrade their, their site furnishings, because that was another, you know, globally speaking, and all their station platforms, it was really pretty ugly, and, and I think there was a kind of unanimous consensus on that, and through a mass movement, we've, you know, as a, as a group of cities, we forced Smart to, to change all their, like, you know, their benches, their lights, and their shelters, to all be something much more attractive, and more in line with the type of architecture that you see in the cities in Snell County. So that, so that kind of actions worked, individually I haven't seen it work. And then the, on the second point, if, if we decided to let them install what was in their plan, I, I think we would, if we wanted to go back and change it later, we would have to rip it out and dispose of it, and then pay somewhere closer to $200 a square foot, or a linear foot to put in the, the type of fencing that we're talking about tonight, that Smart's proposing to put in $120 a linear foot.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Well, I guess it's usually always more efficient to do it once, do it right, and thank you for seeing in the plans that it was not going to be what was consistent with the rest of the station, and I also think that it's important that you caught that we could use their pricing now, because if we were to go out and do it ourselves, of course, we wouldn't have the benefit of having such a large amount of work going on as they do, so I guess that's what I think about that.
Councilmembers coming?
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Deloso? Okay. And I don't have any questions, I think it was explained pretty well, what's going on, and, but this is something that we should act upon, so with that in mind, do we have any direction?
I'll open this up.
Oh, pardon me. I'll open this up for public comment, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Counsel, this sounds scandalous to me, 120 feet of, linear feet of fence, the city's asked to put up another $45,000, this doesn't make sense. I would ask you, I know your concern for the city is good, and you want this to look good. The city council needs to put some pressure on Supervisor Rabbit and the Smart officials, I mean, you're going to all your committee meetings, you need to get on the horn, put a little pressure on, and tell them they need to work with our city staff to, to rectify this problem. I mean, I feel bad for staff, and I can, I can hear and feel that they've tried to do what they can, and they're up against a wall here, and they've done everything except fall short of asking you to step in and do something, and I think that you should. I would say table this for 30 days, if you can, because I don't see the, I don't have the work schedule in front of me, but this is not representative, this is not good for the town, $45,000, that's a lot of money, we've had children come here asking for skateboard parks and all kinds of things, 45,000 will go a long ways, you know, and, you know, it's really funny, when, when people come forward and they ask the city to do something, oh, we're broke, we don't have the money, and then when you guys want to do something, you got the money, and, you know, people are wise to that, and I think you can do better. I can, I can feel the incentive on the part of the council, something stinks here, the city can step up, and they can try to work out a better deal for the city, because this is really embarrassing, and, and I would applaud you to, to do something to try here, thank you.
Thank you. Would any of us like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
Well, this is a little different, I'm looking over at my colleague here, we remember right at the beginning, before the big downturn hit Smart, and the initial meetings, what we were being offered in terms of what these stations would look like, and this is a little different than that, but if you combine that with what's in the paper today, with Smart vying for the dollars it should rightfully, logically, at least in my personal opinion, go to the Nevada Narrows, I guess it's their week to be the Grinch perhaps, but in fairness, that's a very, very good point, that they're stuck in a position where they're funded to do a project, and the, the amount of their funding dropped immediately after they were contractually locked into doing that project, so naturally they have to keep their costs low, and if one city asks for an upgrade, even though I think it's the exactly right idea to do, and others going to, others will follow, so naturally they're going to do that, and I'm heartened that number one, when this community pushed them on the chimera tree, that they did not want to invest money in, they stepped and did it, and I'm also pleased to see with the important things of circulation that they're coming forward, just working on that, so seeing as they've moved for us twice, I think I have more than a willingness to move for them once, I think that's the way you do things in the modern world, and that's not a bad way to get things accomplished. I, I have one last question for staff, I think this is an easy one, but I'm just going to confirm, can we build a skate park for 45,000? I don't think you're going to have, I'm seeing nods from our city engineer.
I think we can start thinking about it for 45,000.
Very good, thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
I have to agree with Councilmember Landman, I mean, we have had our struggles with Smart for a while now, but they did do good by this city, by moving the tree, they spent an awful lot of money, and, you know, hung in there and fought us, and it sounds like they're going to work with us on getting people across the street. I think that we've gotten this down as good as we can, from what I understand, and we can't get everything we want, so I tend to agree with you, two out of three is not bad, so I would agree that we should take care of this, because I think that we want our station to look nice, we want it to look pleasing, and I'd rather do it right the first time.
Thank you. Councilmember Deloso?
I have nothing to add to the conversation.
You look like you were ready to.
I'm just ready to make a motion, no.
Okay. And Councilmember Skilman?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly too, I appreciate staff catching this right now, especially since they're out there getting ready to do the work, so I think it's especially a good moment to strike and get this done, as least amount of cost impact to the city as possible, so, and I especially thought it was very good foresight to move the conduit, so that we can still access it, because that would be a huge chunk of change to try to access it later on if it's buried under cement, so very good catches, thank you for doing that, and I would go ahead and support this when we get to that moment.
If my understanding correctly, we also have a bypass there, with two trains that will be there at the same time that we weren't originally looking at, which has, which may have, may have contributed to overlooking that previously?
When, when Smart was being planned originally, it was, it was just planned as a single track throughout the system, because they didn't have enough information about scheduling to, to know where trains were going to pass each other, and so it turns out, based on their scheduling, that they needed a siding in this area, so the siding is what creates the second track. There's actually, technically, I think there's three tracks, because you also have freight rail going through there, and the freight trains are wider than the passenger trains, and so they didn't want the, the, it's called a gauntlet track, because they didn't want the freight train shearing off the front of the platforms for obvious reasons. So, so there's a lot going on there in terms of track work, and as a, as a consequence of that, and also, you know, as a consequence of some of the discussion that you had tonight about the, about the funding of Smart, and the subsequent recession that eliminated or took down a lot of the funding they planned on receiving to do the project, has resulted in some changes, system-wide, and, you know, I think you'll, for, you know, for example, you know, Smart is basically not building parking either, you know, and that's, that was one of the consequences of the funding loss. So they're, you know, they really are looking at delivering a project, and they're looking at, in delivering the project, they're, they're putting in place what they need to put in place to make it a safe, legally compliant project, but they're not necessarily focused on aesthetics, and that's where the cities individually come in.
Thank you. So with that, I'll look for some council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to move adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order with Smart, and approving an appropriation from the general fund to modify the fencing design proposed by Smart at the Catati Train Depot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does the record show, that's a 5-0? Thank you.
Okay, and we have no correspondence, no pending legislation at this time, so we will move to the city manager's report?
So in continuing the theme of Public Works Appreciation Week, I have some project updates from, it's all Public Works night, tonight. So the sidewalk accessibility upgrades, this was the, it's a combination of community development block grant, primarily funded projects with some Measure G funding as well. It includes the Wolford Avenue side curb ramps, the ramps on the corners, and also the new sidewalk on La Plaza, and West Catati Avenue around La Plaza Park. So that project, if you've been back in Wolford Avenue area, you'll notice that that's, the project's underway, a lot of the curb ramps have been broken out, and they're looking, they're formed up, and they'll be pouring those soon, and then I think once they're moving off of those curb ramps, they're going to move into La Plaza and start working on the sidewalk. So that's, that's underway, and the Fleety Path, Pathway Project, and the Highway 116 landscaping work, both of those projects had a kickoff meeting today, and right now we're expecting them to start work on, on both those projects next week, so I can expect to see some work here on East Catati, or East School Street, outside of City Hall for the Fleety Pathway Project, and, and out on 116 for the landscaping. And with that, I'll just, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Now we have the city council members' reports. Councilmember Skilman?
Thank you. On April 29th, I attended the Lucien Luncheon, and they had hosted it, they had, several of the city managers came and talked to the group about what city managers do, so I was glad to be part of that, and it's a great organization, and so it was, it was nice to see what they're doing, and they're actually talking about universal childcare at their next lunch, so they're really doing well to get as much information as they can out to, to folks in the, in the community. And then on May 7th, I attended, which was not really a city function, but we were invited to the Schultz Museum, they have a new politically, sort of themed, new exhibit. have a new politically sort of themed new exhibit. And so they had invited members as well as some city electeds to come and see it. And it's kind of fun because then you go around, you see posters up for Snoopy for president and Lucy for president and you get to vote for who you want. And so it was, it was a neat presentation because I think it'd be fun to bring kids there and have them vote and get a temporary tattoo on their hands for who they, you know, for voting and just sort of an interesting way of explaining the political process to very little kids. So I very much enjoyed that. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Delaso?
It sounds like maybe those two candidates would win a lot of the popular vote right now, too, but we're not going to talk about that. Just two events that came up. One was two weekends ago, we took part, our house took part in the daily access Sonoma County Water Agency garden tours. So it was supposed to be from 10 to 1. We were given labels to label because we have a drought tolerant yard. Of course, 8:30, the first person showed up and the last person left at 3:45. So it was great because that last person actually, my lovely wife went and dug up some starts of a plant, Jupiter's Beard, that this woman said she can't find anywhere. So she dug up like six little starts for her and she was happy as a clam. But it was great. We had probably close to 70 people that, you know, came to the house at different times. And Brianna brought a group of people from Pocket Park over at one point in time, which was a group of about 15 or 20 folks. So just a lot of people, I was pleased because a lot of people left there going, oh, you know what? This, this isn't that difficult. I could just take a piece of my sod or lawn away and put some plants like this in and they look nice year round with less maintenance, no mowing, none of that stuff. So anyway, that was great. And on the Sonoma County Ag Preservation Open Space District, I'm on a subcommittee for the approval of all the projects, their grant projects that they do every other year. I think this year there's $2.5 million available. And so we're now reviewing 13 proposals that staff has pared down to these top 13. And, you know, we were successful years ago in getting funds for, across the street here. And we should think, we have two years, but we should think about, is there some other projects? I've heard a few things from some people in the community about possibilities like the headwaters, the lagoones, or something we could do there. But I want to say, and the emphasis is really important here, these, these projects run anywhere from city park to an ag use to just open space preservation. So, you know, if we're looking at even our existing city parks, and let's say, you know, the, the fencing or the buildings or whatever structures are affiliated are in need of help, this is a fund source that we could go to. Only every other year, but there's no reason, you know, this doesn't have to be, let's buy 10 acres of land and put a trail in. It's, it's not that. It's much broader. And in fact, a lot of the projects, like the Andy Lopez Park, was one that was funded last, two years ago. And I noticed that it's in for another proposal. So anyway, so we'll be evaluating those over the next two weeks and then making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And this weekend, as a side note, Sunset Magazine is doing their annual, forget what it's called, big event, but it's in Cornerstone, which is a really cool place over in Sonoma. So if you really want to get a great laugh, although it costs money to get in, I am going to be representing the National Park Service and I'll be doing a National Park Jeopardy. I have no idea how I got locked into this. It's going to be very different. It may be the end of my career, actually. We'll see. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Delaso. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes, on May 2nd, I attended the Water Advisory Committee and just a couple of things. One, to add on to Councilmember Delaso, for the eco-friendly garden tour, there were 1,700 people that signed up to go to the various ones. So that was very popular. And then the other thing that will be happening next week, starting 5/18, is a county-wide Take It From The Tap campaign. And each of the cities will be getting a kit. So hopefully, Damian, you've gotten our kit. If not, it's probably coming this week. It's modeled on a program that was set up last year in Santa Rosa. And so now they're expanding it out countywide. And that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I think I touched on this briefly. News from Sonoma County Transportation Authority. The biggest thing perhaps is the ongoing, unfortunately, public dust-up between numerous agencies vying for some orphaned federal money. Obviously, Sonoma County Transportation already has their eyes on this. I believe it's roughly 18 million that might be available. And combined with us having our half, we could complete and finish the Narrows project. Having lost that money, which it was originally earmarked for us this year with cutbacks on the federal level, that would be a huge thing to do for the public. Unfortunately, SMART, most notably, I believe there's one other agency put in for it. So you'll see a lot of back and forth. Supervisor Rabbit seems to be taking the lead on this. I did notice a very supportive column by Dick Spotswood in the IJ for him today. So we'll see. Obviously, they're all good projects. There's not one of them that doesn't benefit the public. I think that Mr. Spotswood might have summed it well by saying that what you really have to look at is what benefits perhaps the most when you're in this situation. And there's no doubt that the Narrows project benefits a huge amount of people, a lot more. So we'll cross our fingers and see if people can get together and figure out the best path for them because it always works better, obviously, when we work in concert. And we'll just end up with a quick report from Sonoma Clean Power. Budget setting, rate setting, two-year anniversary. Here's where we're at. We've paid all of our debts. All of our startup costs are paid down. They paid down early. And that's about 2.5 million. That's done. At the end of this year, we should have roughly 30 million in reserves. That's ahead of where we wanted to be, the goal. Right now, the tentative goal we set last year is 50 million reserves. We'll see if that gets a little lower or a little higher, but that seems like a prudent place to be because that's very beneficial in terms of protecting you in terms of downturns, getting the cost of energy lower for you in numerous other ways. It's really beneficial as an agency. Lastly, you might have noticed we have earmarked so far, at minimum, 3.5 million for local projects. And most notably, taking a deep look at what we can do to expand the use of electrical vehicles or EVs in this county. But most importantly, probably what most people are concerned about in town, as you know, there's been some up and downs in the rates. That's not unusual PG&E. And we had to deal with it, too. Sonoma Clean Power started out at about 2.5% below PG&E. Very quickly within that first year with PG&E raising rates and different rates, because there's lots of different rates they have for different accounts. We ranged from 6% lower to up to 12 in a couple of small accounts. Then PG&E had their indifference charge, the PCIA, which interestingly enough wiped that almost back down to parity. It was amazing. They found something that just allowed increasing rates for customers of CCAs like Sonoma Clean Power. But with that, we felt it was important to provide some benefit and keep us attractive. So we're going to have a flat 2% reduction in rates from where we are, I believe, in February. So that should be a small break for consumers. Plus, we'll also be reducing by roughly a third the cost of our 100% green power program. That's not a for-profit program. That's basically tied to whatever the cost of 100% clean power, most of which at this point has come from the geysers. It's tied to that. And that has dropped in this last year significantly. Most clean power has been. That's a good thing. So bottom line, some relief for consumers and financially, we're in good shape. So all in all, I think it's a good balance of things and wanted to share it with you.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of you, Councilmember Landman? Do you have a rough number in your head of Sonoma Countywide, how many people are in Sonoma Clean Power versus PG&E or any other provider?
Well, this is going to be really a seat of the pants, but we have, what, about a half a million in this county people, I think, assuming most, and there's a big assumption here, but let's just say most of them are customers. People need power. And our opt-out rate, I think, is about 13% roughly right now. So that gives you a clue roughly. It is most of the county. So the good thing about this, when we talk about like 2% or 6%, or even up to that 12%, unless you're a huge commercial entity, your check is, your bill's a little lower, but it doesn't make a big difference. But what happens at the end of the year, it adds up. And most notably, in the aggregate, for the whole county, it adds up. And again, I'm trying to go from memory. I think was it last year, about 6 million was kicked back into the local economy because people save that much in rates. So that's a little more in their pocketbook and hopefully a little more spent locally. So even small amounts like that, when you're dealing with the whole county, it adds up to big savings. So I hope that gives you an idea of numbers and.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything to report out at this time. Other than that, we are still looking, seeking volunteers for the upcoming Kids Day. And I didn't know if any of the other council members were going to be participating in the Rose Parade as, as parade participants.
I, my son is going with his school, but I had not, I am available if you need somebody to tag along.
The Rose Parade Commission sent an invitation to the city, elected officials, if they would like to participate. So if you guys are interested, we can coordinate through the city manager.
Could we, could we just get some info on that? I mean, not right now, but if there's a, an invite, just a copy of it in the mailbox or something?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with the mayor and distribute it to the council.
That'd be great.
Okay, now we'll move on to the public comment and non-action agenda items. Anyone wish to do something? Mr. Barich?
Thank you, sir. A recommendation to the city manager, too, that maybe we can invite previous former city council members to walk in the Rose Parade as well. There's a number of those in town and we may be interested in doing that. I'd like to comment, or I'd like to thank the council for not reading the first page of the agenda and the housekeeping rules and so forth. I think that's a step in the right, right direction. It took three years to convince the council to actually vote on, on the decorum and some of the rules. And I think we're on the right path. We're no longer reading those. That was actually my first recommendation some years ago, is just print them on the wall or print them on the agenda and then let people read them. But Mr. Deloso said, you know, George, I thought you were kind of an environmentalist and you wanted to save paper. You know, what's going on? You know, you want us to use more paper? Well, we are using more paper now. And so I want to thank the council for actually taking me up on the, on the idea of printing it out and not having to have us sit through every meeting, listening to this whole page. Well done, council. We're on the right track. Let it be known that you can fight City Hall and win. And people do eventually listen. They do get it in time. And that's very inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any information received after the agenda was posted. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:28.